A regular meeting of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Coolidge City Council. Call it to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Due to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Norma, since this is the regular meeting, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Tom Bagnall.
Present.
Councilmember Audrey Saavedra.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Hudson.
Here.
Mayor John Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Ian Gillespie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tatiana Murrieta. And Councilmember Tom Schulp.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Norma. Okay, let's call the public. As I look at the audience, they're all experienced audi- audience scores. Is there anybody here that wants to come up and address the council? Call the public. Seeing nobody rush forward, we'll move out and call the public. Approval of minutes, discussion and action. For item three, city council regular meeting, June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Item four, city council special meeting, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Item five, city council regular meeting, June twenty-third, twenty-five. Okay. Is there any corrections, comments or concerns regarding any of those? If there isn't, I'll need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve items three, four and five of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion of second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving to public hearings, item six, to receipt public comments on the proposed zoning code text amendment to the Coolidge zoning code changing Article twenty-one fee section twenty-one oh two-nine major pad amendment to twenty-five hundred dollars base fee plus twenty dollars an acre and adding sixteen preliminary plat extension of five hundred dollars. This is a public hearing. James?
Mayor and council, we have before you just some fee changes, some minor fee changes to the, to our zoning fees. We brought this before the planning zoning commission last week and they recommended these, these changes for approval. We, our base fee, I know we're adjusting them, but you know, our base fee back in two thousand nine when we started this, it was about eight hundred and twenty dollars was the base and thirty-six dollars an acre. We raised that to twenty-five hundred dollar base fee and twenty dollars an acre. So it, it helps us with the smaller subdivisions that are, you know, under fifty acres because the reviews, you know, they cost quite a bit. And then you'll see a savings in the larger subdivisions, you know, where, you know, we've already, we've already reviewed these for the major when we did the PAD in the first place, that's twenty-five hundred dollars and forty dollars an acre. So with these adjustments, we looked at the other cities around us and, and we're not above them or not below them or we, we kind of found the sweet spot when we looked at all this and when we studied it. This is, this is the, just a public hearing in sixty days. So we, we have the fees posted, so in sixty days you'll, you'll see this again for action. And any questions you have, we happen to answer.
It's a public hearing. Does anybody have any questions? Well, they look fairly comparable to me. I mean, some of them are higher or lower than used Eloy and Florence and Casa Grande, didn't you?
Yeah, we, yeah, we used all of those. And Florence, when they did their study, they did the same thing we did, but they just compared, you know, comparable jurisdictions and, and that's what they came up with.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Myers, is there anything, it seems like it's all I want to balance out, and that's what you were probably trying to do, but is there any one item that went up that's going to cause somebody some grief that we're going to hear about?
No, no, we've, we've, you know, they, they all seem to like these fees. We've had no feedback from them, so they, we, we did receive feedback from the higher acreage fee, that, that's for sure, but you know, since we lowered it, they're, they're happy with it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess that's that. It's a public hearing. All right. Well, then I guess we're going to move out of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into business items for consent. Is there any items that anybody wants to pull off of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor Thompson, I'd like to pull ten and fourteen, please.
Ten, fourteen. Anybody else? Okay, here we go. Item seven, consider approval and acceptance of the proposal submitted by Granicus to upgrade the automated agenda program from IQM two Menatrac to peak agenda management for the city's clerk, city clerk's department. Item eight, consider approval of entering into an engagement letter agreement between Clark Hill and the city of Coolidge for representation in connection with water-related matters. Item nine, consider approval of entering into a high-density drug trafficking area, HIDA grant agreement between the city of Tucson and the city of Coolidge Police Department for continued participation in the Penale County Drug Task Force Program, HT twenty-five twenty-nine fifteen. Item eleven, consider approval to accept the bid approved by LLR Electric to install an emergency electric, electrical transfer switch to provide emergency power for the adults center in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the Public Works Building Maintenance Division. Item twelve, consider approval of entering into an agreement with Stan Tank Engineering to review and update civil design standards for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item thirteen, consider approval of adding a streets maintenance labor lead position at a range thirty-eight within the salary plan and allow Public Works Department to fill said position. Item fourteen, oh, sorry, check that. Item fifteen, consider approval of the Authorization of Services Task Order Number Seven with Kimberly Horn and Associates, Inc., for an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents for the purpose of construction administration portion of the GA apron and taxiway C project and facilitate the submission of comprehensive documentation to the city and the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for the airport taxiway C and apron project at the Coolidge Municipal Airport. Item sixteen, resolution number twenty-five dash fourteen, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, Arizona, authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement between the United States Department of Transportation acting through the Federal Aviation Administration and the city of Coolidge for a grant of federal funds for construction of a general aviation apron, IIJA dash AI, AIG, grant number three zero four zero zero one one zero one nine twenty twenty-five. Item seventeen, resolution number twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, Arizona, authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into the grant agreement between the United States Department of Transportation acting through the Federal Aviation Administration and the city of Coolidge for a grant of federal funds for construction of a general aviation apron, AIP, grant number three oh four zero zero one zero twenty twenty twenty-five. Item eighteen, resolution number twenty-five dash sixteen, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, Arizona, authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into the grant agreement between the United States Department of Transportation acting through the Federal Aviation Administration and the city of Coolidge for a grant of federal funds for design cost for a general aviation apron, grant number three oh four zero zero eleven dash zero one eight twenty twenty-five. Need a motion to act.
Mayor Thompson, I move to approve consent items seven, eight, nine, eleven through thirteen and fifteen through eighteen as read.
Okay. Motion of second, Norma.
Okay. Councilmember Schulp?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillespie?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item ten, consider approval to enter into an agreement to purchase two twenty-nineteen Ford F seven fifty-five yard end dumps from United Rentals for the Streets Department and unfreeze capital sales tax funds for an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand, forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents, waiving the sealed bid requirements in the best interest of the city, interest of the city and authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary document.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
And Mr. Navarro, you always have the best items on here. I just, I just had to, I just really wanted to point this out because, you know, we're replacing three, four-year-old dump trucks. So I think we pretty much squeezed every bit of use out of those that we possibly can. I'm surprised, I don't even know if they're, if they're probably just still limping along or something, but I think it's, it's real credit to the Public Works Department keeping those things up and running and we're able to get that much use out of them because most, something like that, you could normally get a, you know, historical vehicle plate for it or something. So I want to, you know, just recognize that and say thank you to you guys for the work on that. And then the two that we're getting, you know, they may not be new, but it sounds to me like they're gonna, they're gonna be a good replacement for the ones that we're retiring or maybe we're not retiring and maybe they're still working. I don't know, but.
Well, we actually plan on holding on to them for a little while. We can use them as backup and we've got some secondary places. I mean, you're right, they are, they are a classic vehicle, but, no, all the credit goes to Jeremy Hoover and the Vehicle Maintenance Department. These guys keep everything up and going. We can use these in other areas that we normally wouldn't put a newer truck into, so if it gets a ding or we end up using it at the wastewater plant, nobody wants it after we, we use it out there. So these are good alternatives for something like that.
Right. Yeah, and the only other thing, do, do these come with a, any type of a warranty on them or is that, I saw here, I think, I think it says that if you want to safeguard the, the used equipment, there's something that you can add on to that or?
So it's pretty much an as-is when you, when you buy this piece of equipment. The reason we're so interested in it is because it's set up the way we want. So it has the proper tailgate with the chute on it that we can use with one of our patchers. Also has the glad hands for the air hookups, the panel hooks for our, our trailers and everything. So they're set up to pole everything that we want. So it has some accessories we would normally have to pay extra for and they're already set.
Okay, great. All right, that's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mayor. Mr. Navarro, just out of curiosity, what would a new price be on either the?
Okay, so for a new one, we pulled quotes while we were going through budget. The cheapest we found was a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars on a five-yard end dump and that was before we got the chute style tailgate on it and got the panel hook and the glide hands. So we pulled a recent quote from Empire for the same truck and it was a hundred and sixty thousand.
Sixty, okay. Thank you.
They look, they look like pretty good buyers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You better get thirty-six years out of them.
We'll try. They don't make them like that.
Yeah, we're good for another thirty-five years now, right?
Yeah.
Okay. There's nothing else and I'm going to need a motion to.
Okay, Mayor Thompson, I move to approve item ten as read.
Is there a second somewhere?
A second.
Okay, motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, and fourteen, resolution number twenty-five thirteen, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, Penale County, Arizona, authorizing an application to the Arizona Smart Fund for a grant for matching funds for Safe Streets for All grant and submission pursuant to Title twenty-eight, Chapter two, Article two, Arizona statute allowing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Mr. Navarro.
Okay. I just want, again, I just wanted to recognize the fact, I mean, these, these are definitely areas that we need to have addressed along Arizona Boulevard, eighty-seven and everything. So I think it's great and I just was kind of curious, what, do, will, will we get, can we get the full grant or can we get a partial grant or how does that work?
Okay, so how this works, this is piggybacking off of a grant submission for the Safe Streets for All. So myself and Mary Siles applied for the Safe Streets for All grant, which was about four point three million and we did that application. This one point four million-ish dollars is a match fund through the Arizona Smart Program, so it piggybacks. So if we get the Safe Streets for All grant, that's the matching number that we have to pay to get the, get the project done. That's why we are applying for the AZ Smart Grant, so we can get that matching fund. So essentially, if we get the Safe Streets, this, and we get this one, it doesn't cost us a dime. All of these projects are on ADOT right-of-way, so if, it's, it's an all or nothing. If we only get one and don't get the other one, then I'll, I'll walk away from it. I personally don't feel we should be paying for ADOT to get their roads fixed, but we can use this grant to, to get the funding to get it done in our area. This was, um, this was a study that was done in partnership with the Sun Corridor MPO through Penale County, the city of Eloy and the city of Casa Grande, along with Coolidge, and they identified a bunch of areas and these were the, the four highest, most pressing areas in Coolidge and so that's why we're pressing for these. And so this is just a matching fund, so it's, I'm using it as an all or nothing.
Okay, yeah, because, because I mean, especially Martin Road in eighty-seven, I mean, that's, that's always been a bad.
Yeah.
Area right there, so that, that would really be beneficial there as well as on down to Bartlett and Wilshire and everything. So, yeah, I, I was just kind of curious if it was, you know, something that if we'd only get a partial grant or we get them all, so the answer.
If it comes down to it and say we end up getting for all and we didn't get theirs on a Smart Grant, I would honestly lean on ADOT to, to backfill those matching funds. If they didn't, we could bring it back and see what the council's temperature was on if we wanted to backfill this and get these done. But the way I see it now, ADOT should cover, if they can't cover this partial piece, this twenty percent on that grant, they should be able to because it's in their, their right-of-way.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? No? All right.
Okay, and Mayor Thompson, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash thirteen, item fourteen of the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Okay. All right, Norma.
Councilmember Gillespie? Councilmember Schulp?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Move into business and the regular items. Item nineteen, consider approval to unfreeze capital sales tax funds to purchase six twenty-sixteen Chevy Tahos from Garrett Motors in the amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars for the police department, waiving the sealed bid requirements in the best interest of the city. Chief Grisell, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Happy to answer.
Yeah, I'm going to stand for both on it.
Happy to answer any questions. The PD is just asking to approve the six.
Yeah, you know, I was talking to Commander Tracero. Chevrolet at one point was going to have an open allocation for Tahos and so when my factory rep called or emailed me and told me that, called him, he says, so far it looks like they're going to do that. They're going to have seventy, seventy thousand Tahos nationwide, which seventy thousand Tahos sounds like a lot, but after the last three years of not having them being on allocation, it's really not that many. So I told Commander that we need to get this approved as soon as we can because we can open up for ordering on the twenty ninth of this month and I wanted to be ahead of the game to make sure that we got them. Well, since then, General Motors is not opening up for open allocation. It's going to be on allocation only and I talked to my factory rep and told him that I made a commitment. So he said he's going to guarantee, no, I can't guarantee anything but taxes and death, but he said that I was going to go ahead and get those because not only do we have these six, but we have the Stone Garden Tahoe that grant's already been approved, city council's already approved it. We've been waiting six months to get that Tahoe because we got it awarded, by the time we got the money, we couldn't order them. So, and everything is based off of that MSRP. So if the MSRP comes less, the city's going to pay less. If it's more, of course, you're going to pay more. That's why it's, it's a hundred thousand dollars, it's not to exceed six hundred thousand for six Tahos. So hopefully it's going to be less. I know MQ could give us a solid figure also, so the price is a little bit higher, hopefully we're going to be a lot less. I'm just guessing at what the increase is going to be and hopefully we're going to get them all. If not, then we might have to go to that place in Texas and get, hopefully I'm going to call them and see if they're going to get any and maybe put us on the list just in case. And of course, those come already outfitted, so we wouldn't have the MQ, but I just want to let everybody know the situation we are in with Tahos and with the Smart, the Stereocap Pay Program we have, hopefully we're going to get, you know, all these people coming in being Coolidge Police Officers and we'll need fifteen Tahos next year.
Uh, not about fifteen, but probably an extra one or two just to cover. Jeremy and I went over it today, we're real close. If we have every position, we need one extra vehicle for K nine's backup, but we're really close, we're within one. We've had a down of Bullstone Garden vehicles, not that it pertains to this, but since you gave an update to council, Bullstone Garden vehicles are down, one engine's fried, one's waiting to be traded as a Tahoe. You mentioned when we get that trade with Garrett Motors here in town. But other than that, I simply just ask that you approve these six that we have for now that we know. It did come earlier than we usually would like to wait till October, let's see if sales tax money start rolling in. Because of the window opportunity, we had to put it on like the first meeting.
And we're probably not going to see delivery and with MQ and everything, probably the end of the year, maybe the first next year already, so.
So the two we have waiting in MHQ was what, twenty-three, twenty-four? That was the budget before and we still haven't received them yet, so.
Right.
Any questions?
Yeah, chief. Do these have the, the package with them for the lights and the police package and all that?
Correct. Well, we're asking for six, we're probably going to move one into the K nine because our, if you remember in twenty sixteen, we got a Tona Auto grant, after five years we transferred that into the K nine, so it didn't cost the city. That vehicle's starting to get a little rough, so we'll make you, it's all going to go to patrol.
You still, do we still, are there any Rico vehicles anymore? I'm just curious.
No.
No more, huh?
And just, you know, GOHS, Torres took over Roberto Gutierrez, he says there's no more Goj vehicles.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Steve is our lifeline, even though he's recused himself, he's our lifeline.
All right, thank you, chief. Any questions? Anybody got any question? All right. Then I guess we need a motion to act.
Mayor Thompson, I move to approve item nineteen of the regular items.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, that carries. I, oh, item twenty, ordinance number twenty-five dash oh five, an ordinance to the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, Arizona, levying separate amounts to be raised for primary and secondary property tax levies upon each one hundred dollars of the assessed valuation of property subject to taxation within the city of Coolidge for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Garcia.
Mayor's member of the council, just wanted to point out one change that we found kind of late in the game after it was, the ordinance was already posted and it was just one correction in section one. If you look at the one that was probably in your packet, we have updated it since. There's a levy amount of one million, six nine two four eight six. That was last year's levy. We did go ahead and change that to the one million, nine hundred sixty-eight, eight seventy-eight. The rate is correct, it was just that one section that we didn't move it from last year's number to this year's number. That was typographical in nature, but we ended up catching that, we ran it, talked to Dennis, so they re, did reword that, doesn't make any difference other than we already posted the one point nine, we already have that in our budget, we talked about it in the tentative, we talked about it in the final, so this, and that was what was presented in our truth in taxation and our public hearing. So that was just a typo on this actual just document. So we did fix that, so if you noticed that, just want to note that change. So the ordinance that would be signed tonight would be the correct amount of the one point nine million, so. But other than that, this is the rate and the amounts that we talked about for next year, so it'd be the one million, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight from the property tax. The secondary tax levy is what we have for our bond and we only put the amount necessary to make the payment for the, for the upcoming year. And so based off what we got, that goes down to twenty cents, it did drop from last year and so we're raising about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand on that one. So total tax rate is one point eight zero seven six with the primary and secondary. So the primary went up a little bit, the secondary went down. Again, we had a public hearing at the last council meeting, we have received no public and so we're just looking for approval and this would officially close, I guess, what you would say, the entire budget season for this past year and we will continue on, we'll send this over to the county tomorrow.
So refresh my memory, Mr. Garcia, how much are we looking at per, say, per hundred dollars on a, both primary and secondary?
So the primary is a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. That's on a house that's valued at a hundred thousand. Now, this is, again, this isn't what you sell your house for, what you could go sell it for, this is what it's assessed at. Even when it's assessed, they do divide, I think they divide it by a thousand and then try to multiply it out, so most residents would pay less than the hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the primary and then the secondary would be twenty, it'd be, I think it's probably twenty cents or so, or, I mean, two, two hundred dollars, sorry. Oh. So, um, no, twenty dollars, I'm sorry, twenty.
Two hundred dollars.
Losing the zero there.
It'd be twenty dollars.
Yeah.
So you're looking at a hundred and.
Hundred and.
Seventy, seventy-eight dollars, hundred and eight, a hundred and eighty-eight bucks.
Hundred and.
Basically, okay.
Yeah, a hundred and eighty dollars and.
Per.
Seventy-six cents.
Fifty-nine, twenty, so one eighty.
Hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay.
On a home that's valued at a hundred.
Hundred thousand.
Yeah. And again, when you get your tax bill, there's other rates that are in there, there's county rates or school rates, there's community college rates, so of that entire amount, that's what we would expect to get per house.
And so where, um, what was it last time? What, what would the same amount be? What are we increasing? It's rounded up to a hundred and eighty-eight?
It was a hundred, well, without the secondary, it was a hundred and fifty-six dollars, so it's up about three dollars and fourteen cents.
For a hundred thousand?
From last year to this year and that's on the primary, yeah.
All right, so it can't be much, maybe it's.
It's three dollars and fourteen cents more.
Okay, for the whole thing.
Um, and actually the secondary dropped, so it's probably less than that.
Okay. All right, so that's per hundred thousand, all right. So, I don't know if that's questions for you or, or it's for probably the city manager. How many studies do we have going right now that to like increase, let's say, the sewer rates? Have we heard anything about the trash rates? What do we, I mean, what else, what else are citizens looking at paying more in the coming, coming year?
Probably sewer and trash is the biggest one we have coming up. I think Ben was working on that. The other one, the impact fee study is to developers and.
That won't bother, that won't bother unless, unless they're doing additions or something.
We want to adjust our permitting fees, development fees, they've, they're outdated, they've been the same since two thousand and six, so we want to update those, but that won't be a huge increase, it'll just be around what the surrounding communities are charging so we can pay, you know, the different things we do for review and all of those things. But I don't know, that's the main ones.
We have our first update beginning of August on what we're after the rate study for storage and trash.
Right. And that's, I believe that's it. Do we have any others? Missing anything? No, the impact fee, that's all, Mayor.
Well, I mean, they're low and everybody's got their own opinion here, but to be honest with you, I, I have a, a problem when we raise everything all at once. The citizens aren't, I mean, I don't like that. Maybe, maybe others up here do, I don't. I don't think you can go without for a long time and then all of a sudden try to recapture everything all at once. I don't know that's, that's fair to the people that, you know, the citizens.
Yeah, and we can look at stepping, stair stepping.
That's what I, I look at the tax thing, that's not too tragic. And we don't get much of that, though. That's my problem is we raise this, I mean, this one, you know, it goes back and forth anyway. You know, the valuation goes up and so even if you, you know, it just seesaws around,[1766.78] the property tax does, and the schools are the one that benefits from all that, those kind of taxes, not, not the city.
Correct.
So I'm not taking anything away from the school, but I'm just saying, they see the majority of it. So, you know, and you raise that one, and then you raise the sewer, and then, you know, next go around, you hit them somewhere else, you know? I'm just saying, I don't know that you necessarily wanna hit everybody all as fast as you can, but.
Yeah, Mayor, we can look at options and see if we can step it. Maybe the first year, not so much, and then maybe we'll see what the study shows and, because it's the cost of doing business. It just, everything just goes up, and so we're just trying to stay even with the cost.
Last time we raised the sewer cost, I can't remember.
2008. 2008, yeah, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
Then we privatized to keep the rate down, but now that.
Do we know what we compare to a foreign state, we cast a question on.
The study will have.
For about 15 dollars a month under just surrounding cities.
Right now.
For sewer rate.
Yeah. And Councilmember Gillespie and Mayor Thompson, all those will be presented in the study, and that's what they do is they go around and take all these, so it'll all be presented before you guys. I know we've talked to them, both Ben and I, about any increase in options to bring before the council, you know, as either a percentage or a step or whatever you wanna do to be able to get those in there. Also looking at other ways that we can generate revenues. So we're looking at some different ways that maybe wouldn't cost our citizens per se to do business here, especially when it comes to wastewater. So those, some of those things will be in that study, and we'll come up and bring those to you, so.
Well, you know, wastewater is pretty important. It's even becoming more important as time goes on. It's, you know, it really is with the water credit issue. But I'm just saying, and I'm not saying that we're getting what we should be getting. I don't, I don't disagree with, or I say it's a timing issue. I don't think we should hit our citizens with everything all at once. That's what I'm saying. So I think we need to take a look at how we can phase different things in at different times, and we probably ought to take a look at what's the most important. I do know from where they've relocated me that manholes cave in and there's a lot of activity in our sewer system.
Right.
That sometimes isn't positive activity. So there is a lot of things, unexpected surprises there that we need, we probably, and we're probably gonna have to do something with our wastewater treatment plant eventually. So, and those are expensive. I mean, that's a lot of money involved in fixing those.
And Mayor Thompson, I know one of the things, we did go for a WIFA loan, small WIFA loan that had some forgivable principle. It was a good, good deal for the wastewater treatment plant to install the solar to bring that cost down because that was one of the most expensive costs in the city when you look at just generating that power. So we do have savings there, but one of the things I know that we talked about with WIFA, who is the ones that usually do the Water Infrastructure Funding Authority, our financing authority, they did mention that one of the things we'll have to look at is raising the rates. Because while they do offer, you know, lower interest loans to municipalities, they also look to see what we're doing as a municipality as well. So by not raising our own rate, it doesn't look favorable for us when getting these, these applying for the, these lower interest rate loans.
Well, you can, you can have a gradual, I mean, you could raise it a little bit and then every year if you wanted to, at least they'd know what to expect.
I think that even just doing the study, depending on what you guys choose, just sow some productivity on the city's part to be able to, to, you know, kind of subsidize a package that we would send to them saying, this is our plan, this is what we're doing. We realize growth is expensive. Here's our, here's our, how we lay out. So depending on what council approves, as long as they see that we're doing something and we are being proactive, you know, we still are, I believe we still qualify, I wanna say, what is it, a blight community or was it, or disadvantaged community? So that does work in our favor, but at the same time, you know, they wanna see that we're doing something to try to help ourselves as well. So this, I mean, I think doing the study is number one. Number two is when you guys implement some sort of a change, whether that's a percentage of it, whether that's all of it, whether it's, whatever step it is, that's the City of Coolidge doing our part to kind of partner up with them, so.
Well, and it's probably not a popular thing to say, but you and I both know when it comes to grants and other economic tools that we've used, being a disadvantaged city has been a very big advantage to us compared to some other cities that put in and don't get it because they aren't.
Well, and, and there might be a point in time where we may not qualify anymore. So I think we take advantage of those things while we can and, you know.
That's my point exactly.
Yeah. Mayor, we do have GADA also that started back up at the state, so that's the Greater Arizona Development Authority, and they're also making loans available to cities. And so we look at that also along with WIFA.
So, I mean, that's, that's my concern. Isn't so much that there's not a need. I'm not saying that, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't look at doing, you know, what, I'm sure the majority of the people up here want to, but I think it shouldn't be a bunch of big hits all in a row.
Yeah, we hear you.
But I think you need to look at phasing it in, and I think you need to have some kind of a plan that makes sense. And I think that it'd be a lot more successful with the people in this community than it would by just coming in and saying, well, we're 25 dollars behind, and there you go, everybody. Because when you double their rates, you're not gonna be very.
I think before I got to council, we'd shut down a 25 dollar increase.
So, but anyway, there's a lot of things that play into a lot of these things, and yeah, they have been low, and we have kept them low for a reason because a lot of people don't pay them. And so, to my knowledge, and Ben's here, but even the guy who was here before Ben, we haven't, we haven't shut anybody off when it comes to, you know, the sewer or anything. I mean, there were times that they talked about it, but I don't think we've ever, ever shut anybody off.
Can you tell us the priority if you want?
Well, I know we've had that issue, and I know that it's in different places, but we've never kept anybody's pipe coming out of their house that I know of.
No, we haven't.
I don't think we have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
When, Ben, when are you gonna come back to us with sewer increases and trash? I mean, it's, or maybe I should phrase it, when you do, can you give us a map? I've been reading that some other cities are dealing with that right now.
Yeah, so we're hoping to get our first set of information back about first or second week of August is what I've been told, that we're gonna get our, our first set of information back of where we're at. Once we get the study back, they'll give us options for how we can do rate increases, how much it's gonna be, what it's gonna be. They're looking at everything. As for doing shut offs, actually, the previous city manager had asked me, was there a way that we could do shut offs? So we started, started looking into it. So we do have a vendor that we work with that can do a shut off and do a cap internally inside the line, and they can send a small robot up the line, and they can actually cap it internally inside our main line. And then when we turn it back on, we can actually send that same robot in there to cut it out and pull the, pull the plug out. So we could do it. It's gonna be about 1,500 dollars to do something like that, but that would be something that we would pass on to the customer because we had to plug it because they wouldn't pay. It's a kind of a double edged.
Yeah, another 1,500 dollars, we'll love or collect.
Yeah. But, but they won't have anything go down the pipe either.
That's right.
So it's, it's kind of a double edged sword doing something like that. You do stop it, but you kind of have to figure out something. Maybe if we could get kind of along the same lines, if we could make some kind of agreement with theirs on water to where you can tie the water and the sewer together. So if there was a lack of payment for the sewer and it gets to a certain point, that would, that you, the council decided, hey, after this number, then they get cut off, and maybe it's kind of a, kind of a double on it. It's a, that's something ugly to do, but it is an option of something that could be done. So we can bring some options like that to you and say, here, these are a few of the options that we've come up with, and it'd be kind of pick your pleasure, what you wanna do.
Yeah, we can do it through workshop.
Amount of time for someone not paying.
Well, and that's, and that's the thing, so, I mean, sewer rates are relatively cheap. I don't know about you, but that's, sewer and trash is some of the best money I spend on a utility bill. I mean, you flush the toilet and it goes away. You don't have to worry about it. You stick your trash out front of your house, they pick it up and it's gone. So that's some of the best money you'll spend. It's pretty affordable, too. So you have to get, anybody who's a thousand dollars behind on their sewer and trash, they've been behind for a really, really, really long time. So a lot of this is, is just getting options. I mean, and that's the thing, when you talk about options, we can hit them for the 1,500 dollar charge, but I know there's many times that they come in and say, I can't afford to pay all of this, but I can get on a payment plan and I'll do this and I'll do that. Those things can be worked out, sure.
Mayor, we can, we can have a workshop and bring those options up instead of, that way you get to listen to different options.
Sure. And it's a little premature, but I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking, I know there's things down the road coming up, and I know we're playing catch up on some of these things, but I, I wanna make sure that we also look at doing it the right way.
Yeah.
You know? So, okay, I guess we'll wait and see what happens in August.
So if there's no other discussion, I make a motion that we approve Ordinance Twenty-Five Dash Oh Five. That's read.
Second.
Okay, there's, oh, yeah, go ahead, Norma.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shope?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillespie?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm 21. I think we're there. Consider approval of canceling the July 28th, 2025 city council meeting. I don't think there'll be much, let's have some discussion about that.
Not too much, please.
I know the Councilmember Shope wanted to really be back on here. I'm sure he's gonna vote no on that one.
Yeah, right.
So, all right. I don't, this is, used to be from the old days where we canceled it in July so people could take vacations with their families, so that's why we're doing it. If, if it passes, does anybody have anything? Do they wanna make a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You think I'm gonna vote, don't you? I voted aye. I voted aye.
You were baiting.
I was baiting, yeah. I wanted you to do something. Report, a report from the mayor and council, Tom.
Uh, nothing at this time, thank you.
On Saturday, I went to the back to, back to school backpack giveaway with Papa's kids in the Police Department, and it was lovely, and the staff were here and donating their time, and I, I don't know how many backpacks you guys gave away, but it looked like about 1,500. A lot. You can correct me if I'm wrong with that number, sir.
It said about, for a half hour, still haven't anyone gave away a thousand or two.
Lovely.
About 1,600. People picked them up and had to.
So good job to you guys.
Steve, I have nothing.
Okay, piggybacking on that recent question or comment, Chief, how many, I understand you have quite a few left over. What do we tell people if they come to us and saying, hey, do you have any backpacks left?
A little dispatch, but actually after that, I think it's like the last day or eleven of the month, I have to contact the foundation. She's over here, um, she's supposed to be next. If they need them, just call the PD or they have them, we'll figure out.
All right. Thank you.
What size do you want?
I wish I was going back to school, yeah.
Cute purple one.
Gilbert?
Mayor, yeah, just, just quickly, I, it was one of the things I wanted to report, the number, it was close to 1,400 or over on the backpacks. And then also, just so you're aware, recently APS and SRP both set records for energy use in the valley. From last year, they had a record, now they broke it again because so much energy being used. So our picking plants are working really well to supply the power they need. And then we'll be attending, Ben and I will be attending an A DOT North-South Scoping Meeting, just talking about the North-South Freeway from A DOT, and that's tomorrow. And then I'll be attending the Summer ACMA Conference, the Arizona City County Management Association Meeting, and for a couple of days, and for some training. That's it.
Okay. Gilbert, did you mention anything about skip power?